Some kids, summer time, if you want to everyone to the June, it's July 6th. Meeting, would you join in on Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance in the United States of America. In the Republic where we stand, one nation under God and invisible, where we can justice for all.
Mr. Arina, Mr. Fishani.
Here.
Mr. Cosell.
Here.
Mr. Nixel.
Present.
Mr. Jardina.
I'm here.
Mr. Artuso.
Here.
Mr. Seker.
Here.
Great, we're all set. We've got four items on it actually, the Coastal View for Section 5, and then amendment to the Coastal View for homeowners current. One Edith Dock, and Section 2 for Westford subdivision. Dave, you want us to go ahead and start with Coastal View subdivision?
Coastal View subdivision, Section 5, located Western and Coastal View Drive, at Lake Lady. I'll see if you request a final subdivision and site plan modification, who will associate with the subdivision of land and construction, nine single-family residents on a 30.86 acre parcel. Located in WD Waterfront Development District under the Corwin Town of Webster.
Good evening, Mike Richi, Costas Engineering. Thank you Board members. We were last in front of you, I believe it was May, when we presented the project and we were granted preliminary approval. We were directed to work with the town on their PRC comments and come back for final. We have revised the plans based on the town PRC comments, submit that for review. As of this date, I haven't heard anything new in terms of comments. We've also submitted plans to Monroe County Water Authority, Monroe County Health Department received their comments, and have revised the plans based on their comments. Here seeking final subdivision and site plan approval. And would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Well, I guess the only reason we held it up, you know, from Iowa was just to complete all the issues with the PRC.
Right.
And we had everything else now. Everything that's in these PRC notes, run through them quickly, can? You got it?
I don't have those current copies.
Oh, you're there.
Yeah.
Just one more question. These are the things that are kind of refreshing, everybody's playing.
Sure, absolutely.
That was the only thing to tell you about.
Number one is Hammerhead is listed as 100 feet, should be 120 feet north and south. We have revised that Hammerhead to be 120 feet north and south, per the town's requirement. Revised configuration works better now, noted. Grading comment, may need a guide rail assessment now that the grading and setbacks have changed. We've added a guide rail along the southern portion of the right-of-way, I believe it's 150 feet or so. Just kind of where that event gets a little steeper. Don't expect much traffic, it's a dead-end cul-de-sac, but I think that's a good safety measure. Stormwater, no information about the pond, need to know the capacity of the response. Stormwater pond was constructed in 2003 and expanded in 2006 based on full build-out of the entire subage. Pond section is proposed as nine single-family homes instead of the preliminary design, which consisted of 35 townhouses, which in our conclusion is a reduction below the preliminary design. So, in our opinion, no further design or improvements are required. Another comment, back of the lots need to be drained towards the lake or gutter toward the road. It should be addressed in a SWIP, town does not have a SWIP for this section yet. And the response is back of the lots will sheet flow north, front of the lots will sheet flow to the road, and the house roofs will be directed to the storm sewer via down-spout connections. And in other conversations with Mary, we had notified her with the original SWIP and an amendment just noting the changes in this final section. Comment, are there easements around the pond or is HOA maintained? An easement has been added around the pond, easement is access to both the town and the HOA. Comment, if the path is an open space, is going to be developed, need to have grading erosion plan. Based on comments from the developer, we decided to remove that path from the plan so that comment is no longer valid. And then, silt fence shown crossing the boundary line, the grading there is concerning and should not have silt fence around that protected area. The grading plan has been revised to keep silt fence out of that protected area. We also kind of pulled back our grading even further from that 25-foot buffer to give us more room. Appendix D of the fire code is what dictates the dimensions of the turnaround. And then our response is the turnaround has been revised to meet the applicable sections of Appendix D of the fire code. And then a couple sewer comments. Existing sanitary vault, forest main now going into S12. Recommended that instead of having an inside route, just bring it right to the bench wall and make a smooth transition. And we have made that change to the plan. And then finally, can we make them remove the forest main that is there since it will not be used? Could be a future issue if people dig in there. And we've shown that existing forest main should be removed on the utility farm. And that was comments that were written on May 25th, and we sent this revised letter and plans on June 3rd.
And they've all been included?
They're all, they're all on the final plan. And of course, if the town has any final housekeeping comments, like the letter of credit, you know, signatures of that nature, we'll make sure we work with Josh and Mary and get anything they need prior to construction.
And yes, okay, on the other side, is this now been determined to be part of the HOA?
Also, Verdi Stacy is that that's a rest, this section is part of the HOA, correct?
Will be.
Yes, will be.
Okay, so we'll make the stipulation in those words.
So, it's been agreed that they will join the HOA. And to do that, they have to send an amendment to the CPS 7, to the Attorney General's office, which the attorney's working on now. So that, they have 30 days once they get it, it'll probably take a couple months again. So it's in the process, they're working on it. And I guess the stipulation that you're going to put in there, I guess we need to be careful how we word it because you can't stipulate if you can't start construction until you get it, because that's a few months off, so.
Well, it won't be anything but, how you put the road in, so if there's, I'm going to just take a wing, like a year. A year we cover it? In other words, within a year, it becomes part of the HOA?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, it's nothing much going to happen in the next, you know, three or four months.
Well, we're going to start construction like in a month.
Yeah, that's what it's.
Right. Well, your assignment, I mean, it'll be done probably in three, four months.
Okay, so we'll say six months, something like that, or?
Yeah, should be fine.
Okay, so how about you guys? Make this six-month period of time, we're studying it, you know, before they have to actually join the HOA?
Yeah, they've started, the attorney's been hired there.
Okay, one other, one other question now too. This is something I'm thinking, this is along with the other section over there, I don't know where that's going to go yet, totally. Your properties run down to the water, right? Okay, if, if it's an agreement with everyone for the other section, that there's access, and I don't want to say mean high or mean low water, but wherever the water level is, 10 feet from the given gang, when water is here, there's a 10-foot strip or 15-foot where people can go down, they already have the path going down there. But if everybody owns their own, now what do we do with that? They're going to say, I don't want you on my property. Can you, would you be agreeable to allow people just to walk the shoreline?
I'm probably not, no. There's a problem.
It really doesn't impact anything.
I think the property law might stop you from it anyway.
I don't know.
You're going to stop at mean low water, right? Mean low water, 243-3, so it depends on the time of year.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So wherever it is, would you have an issue, I guess, with getting mean higher look? Would you have an issue with people walking along the shoreline? And I don't know what they're going to say either, but I'm, just for whoever comes to these guys, it's going to be the same question, you know? You have a pathway going down now, the HOA does, to the water. Well, if you go down that pathway and all those properties are sold, then technically, nobody has any access other than that one little strip. See what I'm saying? So if I walk down there, if I live in there somewhere, or walk down, can I walk along and skip stones in the water, whatever, you know?
It affects the earth, that's what's a lot more, that's what we have is, I can't get it down to this one, but I think it's probably.
I mean, I don't eat for all, I don't see it as an issue.
Probably you're going to stop people anyway.
What's that?
Probably generally you're going to stop people anyway.
Exactly my point. Who's going to know if somebody's doing it? But I want to make sure that we do it legally so somebody can't go put a sign up that they can't help.
I'd be careful with allowing that for the new private owners, simply because.
Jan, we got to go to the lawyer.
Jonathan Dallas, 1030 Big Room. I'd be concerned about extending that right to anyone in the subdivision, in particular, if everyone is a property owner there. So you give them the right to walk, you give them the right to swim, you give them the right to sit on the rocks, start a little bonfire, you give them the right to kayak and sit up there, make noise at 10 o'clock at night. I think you're negatively impacting the property rights of those new owners that own down to the lake. And I think you want to be a little bit careful with that. Getting down to the lake and enjoying it right from the walk down, taking a kayak out there, or, you know, doing whatever you want to do in that area should be sufficient. But I think you might want to be careful about impacting the property owner's rights. And then you start running into noise.
I don't think I'm impacting anybody's rights.
That's what's happening.
I don't think we're impacting anybody.
Okay, well, I just, I just wanted to make the comment.
You're talking about the home, we did this at the lots and it works, that's all I'm trying to do here.
Yeah, no.
There's no issue.
No, I'm just, just making the comment because walking is one thing, but that right gets extended to other things that the homeowners that are sitting there watching a sunset, and there's a little party going on down in the lake in front of their house. That's a legal right of anyone, I, I don't know, I just, I'd be concerned.
Well, the access, the access, Jan, I believe is just strictly for the homeowners, correct?
Right, right, right.
So it's a private access.
Right.
So if it's a private access, would you feel that some of these people are going to come down to one of those houses and light a bonfire?
Well, no, well, if you give them the right legally to walk all the way down, then you could, then you could be creating some negative relationships between members of the homeowners.
If you, if we say no, now that would mean you own X lot in the middle somewhere. You could put a sign up down there and say, no trespassing. You know what I mean? You could block, you could block all the access all the way down. I mean, that, that's to me.
Well, just my opinion.
I don't think that's fair. Otherwise, let's see what happens.
Yep, okay, yep, thanks.
And I, I think the HOA could have something to say about that too. I mean, like you said, it is for the residents, you know, of Coastal View. I'm sure they could have signs of saying, no bonfires, you know, no gang.
Yeah, and that's something, so that's up to them, that's.
Right. And like you said, for those residents.
Go down and not be confined to just that 25 feet or whatever it is at the bottom of the hill, you know?
I, I agree. And I think the HOA, it's a, it's a pretty.
Well, we can get into that more with the other, but we can forget it, right? I just want, if you're amenable to doing this, that's all, that's my question. You are, okay, that's all I want to know. Okay. And everything else you've got completed? Anybody have any questions or anything? This is all we ask for, for at this point? We have none, hold on. Anything else? Nothing? You guys are all good? All right. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Cetera G M L 361 Coastal View Drive, just a question on the HOA. When we were here last time, and I believe it's noted in the minutes that they had been part of the HOA, while it might take six months or however long we get the CPS 7 amended, I just want to make sure that during that timeframe, if we do start construction, are they, can they be held to at least the architectural standards and all the rules and regulations as they relate to the CPS 7? I just don't want that gap in time between CPS 7 being amended and then starting construction where they're basically saying, hey, we're not part of the, we're not officially part of the HOA. We just want to make sure that the standards and all the, all the rules and regulations.
Well, see, where it is, where it is, you know, this government again steps in, that's what's holding them up now. So I don't feel comfortable saying, well, we can't do anything until we actually see that gap. But we also are saying, you can't go selling the house and then you start building it on. By then, they'll have the paperwork. So the goal we could put in, you know, no, no building, no CMO, no, no building permit or something, until, until it's all paperwork, it's a word, they become part of the HOA.
Sure, I mean, we're fine with them starting construction as long as, you know, we're amicable with.
Yeah, I think we're all agreeable.
And we're in agreement with the regulations. Because we don't, let's hypothetically, if we have only two years to get this amended, and are they, they put through or how comes up?
No, that's why we're, that's why we're staying with you, like six months or something.
Okay, fair enough.
That was the point of that, so.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you. All right. Let's see, actually, you know what we should do with this? They're here for final approval, but I think maybe what we should do is have a motion for, because we're modifying that original subdivision. And we should probably have a resolution if we're approving this modification. I'll make a motion, let me do this. I'll make a motion if we, for the modification to the originally approved subdivision. Just simple as that. Give me a second.
Second.
I'll get a motion.
Mr. Fishani.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Aye.
Mr. Arina.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Nixel.
Aye.
That just covers it, we did do it, correct? All right, the motion for final approval. I have a motion for final approval. First of all, if the applicant joins within a term of six months, the existing HOA or association. The applicant is agreeable to allow passage along the water line of the lake. Access along the waterfront, what's up?
Shoreline.
Shoreline?
Shoreline.
Okay, shoreline, that would be the flat park or the bottom.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, and make that subject to all the PRC comments. Let's see, the letter of credit to be posted with the town of Webster. Section Monroe County Water Authority comments. Didn't need any variances for that, we don't know. Address any land to be conveyed to the town. Address any recent subdivision approvals on adjacent lands. This is for final. Oh, that's what you were saying, yeah. Subject to PRC, subject, obviously, subject to preliminary approval, which you put in there in the other. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to all applicable governmental fees. Subject to all Department of Homeland Works approvals. The conditions of preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover sheet of the final approved drawings. Letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final certification inspection of the site. Stormwater facilities are constructed first. Down-spouts you're connecting, you're connecting, you're running the water. The backyards are going to the, to the lake, front yards are going to detention, right?
Right, and the house is going to detention.
Right.
The house is.
I may ask you, but you may ask me. Let's see, subject to resolution of the final approved minutes. And significant construction shall occur within one year, is the planning board to aspire and. Let me just say it again. It's July 6th, right? 2022. Anything else we need to put in there, please?
I have a thought on that of letting people walk on your property along the shoreline. Could you put a stipulation, it says that during daylight hours only because there's concern for a lot of bonfire or wild parties at night?
Well, you can. I feel it hard to believe that homeowners can go down in front of somebody's house and light a bonfire, but anything's possible, so I don't know. But that would be something to homeowners, I think, there's, they're going to want some stipulations in there, don't they? So I'm getting, no, this is totally off the wall with you guys, because I got two factions in here. You guys okay with something like that? You guys work it out with your HOAs?
We'll take care of it.
All right, that's what I want to know. I don't want to get into dictating something that's, you know, comes back and bites us, you know? Okay, all right. Let's simplify that. And let's see, what else do we, anything else there? All right, well, that would be the motion for final approval for Section 5. I'm sorry, give me a second, Mark.
Mr. Fishani.
Aye.
Mr. Jardina.
Mark.
Mr. Nixel.
Aye.
Mr. Cosell.
Aye.
Mr. Arina.
Aye.
Okay, all set. Move to the final. All right. Yep, we're ready to do the actual.
Amendment to Coastal View subdivision, post-living property located on the north side of Coastal View Drive. All the applicants located on Coastal View Drive are requesting preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval for the applicants to acquire homeowners, homeowner-associated, association lands as an extension of their parcels to the Lake Ontario shoreline located in the WD Waterfront Development District under the Corwin Town of Webster.
Hello, Mike Richi, Costas Engineering, requesting preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval. This is for a total of 30 properties, 29 of which are current residents of Coastal View, and one is the existing homeowner association land. The re-subdivision would allow these 29 residents to own the portion of land to the north of the property between them and the lake. There will be a portion of homeowner association land, the path down to the lake, that will remain. We did receive comments from the town requesting that we revise the planning board application and submit a long-form EAF. We have done that, and additionally, there were some comments on the long-form EAF, which we have revised and resubmitted back to the town. Additionally, one of the comments for the long-form EAF is that we do a SHPO review, which we have done, and we did receive a response back from SHPO today stating that there is no effect and that no further action is required. Additionally, this was sent to the county, we received a comment letter from them. Therefore, they're playing nature, and adding this board's approval. We've worked with the town on the conditions that are set. Obtain planning board chairman's signature, health department's signature, and then file the map to allow these homeowners to obtain that property. You happy to answer any questions the board may have?
Well, probably right now, my biggest issue that I'm going to have with this, I'm okay with it all, what you guys have done, it'll cooperate, and that's great. I hope this whole lot can move. If it was in your court to do this, one issue, land is lot number 125. Right next to the easement on down.
Yep.
Received a letter from Mr. Merz. Actually, I got it this morning. I went over, walked out with him, looked at the site back there. I'm wondering why, why this property line has changed so drastically?
That was at the request of, it was Mr. Palito, in order, I guess there is an existing, in this area here, and again, I haven't seen an existing deck and a gathering space for some of the residents, and they wanted to ensure that that would remain on HOA land as opposed to being on private property.
Well, the way it was laid out, the original layout of it, I'm okay with that, and I think that's acceptable. This, you guys, you guys got your drawing? There's a big chunk missing out, but I can see that gap up there. But it totally destroyed that lot.
This, yeah, this lot here, still, they do still have access to the lake.
Yeah, but that's, that's hokey as all hell. If that was mine, I'd be angry, I'll tell you. I'd prefer to see that right back where it originally was, that property line.
Right.
There's no need to be taking that piece of property. That's devalued that piece of property tremendously. If everybody is buying, they're furnished, they're full width, 90 to 100 feet, whatever it is. And this one here has got a strip of land to get to this little 41-foot piece out there by a 10, 15-foot wide easement.
I understood, and I'll defer to the HOA president.
I'd like to come up and speak.
The wishes to what they want on. I would think that would be acceptable as long as, as that deck and gathering space were still owned by HOA, whether it's an easement or not, just to give HOA.
Is there currently an area there now that's a little, I think I saw some benches in there or something?
Right, that currently, yeah, that's currently part of HOA. I think the goal is that the residents would still be able to use that, and that wouldn't be on private property.
I don't think that becomes too big an issue, am I right?
That person, that piece of the land is not in question. The backyard, the association has never managed to ever maintain, and suddenly they want to take the question.
Right, so, I guess the question is going to be with the homeowners, yourself, like, if that goes back to the original design, what gentleman had is a look like a lot. I don't have an issue with it. Have you guys got the drawing, can we see it there? There's a big chunk missing here, I just asked, so I want to make sure you guys know what I'm talking about. This is what's there. This is the last one, question right here. This kind of went back like this, they carved this out, so this gentleman here now has this little piece to get to this place. See what I'm saying? So that's like. You guys got it? You got it, did it work?
Yeah.
Do you have anyone to talk to? So, what do you want to do?
I'd be happy to work with the HOA in returning.
Well, you're right, you're getting on your own, we're working towards getting the statement final.
Right, and again, you know, pending, I can, if the board were to approve this final, it could be contingent on providing a map that is, that meets the planning board's intent, and that a map would not be signed by yourself until that lot configuration was to your satisfaction.
All right, is that working for you folks too?
Yeah.
I have a little problem with that. We need to know upfront what we're doing. It can't be like, whatever those people decide, it's got to be what we decide. Yeah, well, I want it to work for this gentleman, to make his yard.
I have no problem with.
It has to be, it is all on the property, as it currently stands. So if it's going to become his, then, you know, the way it shows on the other drawing is pretty much a straight line going back.
Whatever that guy's.
But if we approve it, I consider what Mike was saying, it's got to go to the HOA to get an approval. We've got some other members.
We just need to know the intent.
What do you guys feel?
I, I don't care what it is, whatever the board wants to do, but I just need to know the intent so the record is clear as this is what we're doing. If it doesn't pan out, we'll come back and we'll amend it. But if there has to be, can't, can't be ambiguous or bibble, has to be clear what we're doing. Well, then could I say that the lot line will be shown as per the previously submitted subdivision plan? You can reference the date that was submitted and that it matches that lot configuration?
So you guys feel that there'll be modification?
The previously submitted subdivision plan from 2018?
No, so the one that was submitted a couple months ago. What was done, right?
No. The only one I've ever seen that I would agree with is the one that was submitted in 2018.
It was the same. It's the same one, I believe.
I don't know if it was or not, because this association.
It was the same one, right. It was one that was resubmitted initially for this application.
It doesn't have any jobs.
Perfect, yep.
Yeah, that was confusing for that though.
Yep.
And you guys feel better, you guys feel okay with that? All right. Why don't we approve it? So, you know, we can prove it, subject to providing the map, modification of that back to the original.
Okay, right. Do you have a copy of the map that you submitted a month ago?
Yeah, we do have that.
Can you show it to that town?
I don't.
So that he sees it?
Well, yeah, I think I do. If you got one of the original one? Not the one that we're shit looking at right now. Well, here, this is kind of a hokey, but here it is, right here. So this would be it, right here.
Go ahead, Dan. Let me know what's going to happen. Yeah, so essentially, if you're going to have a dash line, it would be a lot.
This is having a lot.
No, it's just showing you where the line goes.
No, it's not, this is the fall of HOA down here.
So this dash line, that would be your lot? Instead of this coming to HOA, this is on a straight shot. Is that correct? That'll be that, that'll be your property line back into it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we tell them. That's on top of that.
And if they're okay with going along with that, then we're good? All right, and then any other issues now? Let me ask a question again. Homeowners, with access along there, I mean, you guys were down there, you wanna go down, you don't wanna be just confined to that spot. If you wanna take a walk, one of your kids is down along the shoreline, I mean, so we put the signs that say no trespassing, now what can we do? Then you're gonna go back, pitch into the town, like, well, let us walk down there, you know? So, is it okay to have reasonable width, I don't know, fifteen feet, twenty feet, that's, people can walk along without any trouble, whatever, you guys.
I would think let the HOA.
Which club team, Mike?
David Brerary, three seventy-five, Postleview. I would just think let the HOA come up with some guidelines and I think everybody in HOA seems to generally come up with a consensus on issues like this, so I don't think it would be a problem.
Okay, so if we put in a resolution that there will be access down there along the waterfront?
I think so.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. That gives us a little, little help, that connects it with their property then, all one contiguous piece. Anything else? You guys all right with that? Jack, anything outstanding? Oh, I'm sorry. Liability. Liability. Good point.
It's no different if somebody walks up my driveway.
What's that?
It's no different if somebody walks up my driveway. I have, I have insurance.
Good point.
That's a point too. You guys, you guys read it. All right, let's, let's leave it like that, let you guys work it out. I personally, and I don't think the board really cares one way or another, but in common sense type of thing, you move on the water, you wanna waffle on the water, you might be able to get to it, you know? All right? All right. All right, um, Josh, any issues? We covered everything. Okay. All right. Let's see. This is an amendment actually. It's listed as preliminary, I was just, yeah, it is listed as preliminary. Yeah, we should, so if there is anywhere else we should speak either for or against this.
We'll go back to liability piece. Walking on your driveway is not the same as walking on rocks and rip rocks can be put in along with the lake as well.
Okay, well, you know what? We'll let you guys work that out, that's all. You guys can figure that out yourselves. It's, I hear what you're saying, I hear what they're saying, so, whatever you guys wanna come up with, it's the benefit or discourage on your side, so. Would you agree with it?
Yes.
Okay? All right, um, so, no more speech, we'll close the public room. All right, you guys are all okay with everything? Speaker, I don't know what's going on. This is all been done, I guess already, everyone's. Is there a secret for them? Yeah. Why don't you read that? Read that directly. Yeah, yeah, that page.
Notice of determination of significance, planning board has recently concluded the following results. Proposed action compared against the criteria in section six seventeen point seven subsection C. Number one, the proposed action will not have substantial adverse change in air quality since it does not include construction of a regulated emission source. Number two, the proposed action will not have substantial adverse change in ground or surface water quality or quantity since the action is for the subdivision of existing lands and does not include new construction. Number three, proposed action will not have a substantial impact on the public water supply since it does not include new construction. Number four, proposed action will not have a substantial impact on the public sewer system since it does not include new construction. Number five, proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change and potential for erosion, flooding, leaching, or drainage problems since the action is for the subdivision of land that adds lands to existing parcels and does not include new construction. Number six, the proposed action will not have substantial adverse change in existing solid waste production since the proposed action does not include construction of new facilities that may generate solid waste. Number seven, the proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change in existing waste, older, or light since it does not include new construction. Number eight, proposed action will not have a substantial adverse change or cumulative change in traffic since the action merges existing lands into existing residential parcels. Number nine, proposed action will not have substantial adverse impact on the criteria listed under section six seventeen point seven, sub C, sub one, sub Roman numeral two of seeker because no habitats or threatened or endangered species will identify on or continuous to the proposed site. Number ten, proposed action is not located in an area designated as a critical environmental area by the town of Webster or New York State pursuant to subdivision six seventeen point fourteen, subsection G of seeker. Number eleven, the proposed action is not in material conflict with town or Webster two hundred and eight comprehensive plan. Number twelve, the proposed action will not create an impairment of the criteria listed under section six seventeen point seven, subsection C, subsection one, subsection Roman numeral five, which is a P of seeker since the action is not located in or adjacent to the listed resources and is in character with the surrounding community. Number thirteen, the action will not result in a major change in the type or use of energy since the action merges existing lands into existing residential parcels. Number fourteen, the action will not create a hazard to human health since it does not contain nor is it located adjacent to existing sources of hazardous substances or contaminants. The project does not contemplate the use or storage of hazardous substances or contaminants. Number fifteen, the action will not create a substantial change in the use of land since the action is consistent zoning for the land, the existing community character, and the town of Webster two hundred and eight comprehensive plan. Use of the existing land being merged into existing residential parcels is already restricted by the Coastal View Association Incorporated Board Resolution that limits access to adjacent parcels. Number sixteen, the action will not attract a large number of people for more than a few days when compared to taking no action since the action is for private use and does not create areas that will attract a large number of people. And the last one, seventeen, the action will not create a cumulative impact on the environment as listed under section six seventeen point seven, subsection C, subsection one, Roman numeral ten, and Roman numeral eleven, Roman numeral twelve of seeker.
All set.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Arena?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. DeShawn?
Hi. All right, uh, let's, this is serious. Preliminary, preliminary final. Okay. So for preliminary approval, I'll make a motion for preliminary approval. Um, let's see. This, the application is for the applicants to acquire the homeowner's association land as an extension of their parcels to the Lake Ontario shoreline. This is, this is the next phase of the W D, which is waterfront development district. Under section, this is four ninety-two eighteen and two twenty-eight dated according to the town of Webster. So the motion for preliminary is to allow this action to.
Mr. DeShawn?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Arena?
Hi.
All right, final approval has been. Everything ready, will you get in there for that? Specifically?
About the consistency of the access, control access, based on.
Yeah, the, yeah, I'm not putting the, the, what is that? What, what is that, Mike, that after referring to one twenty-five? One twenty-five?
Yep.
That the HOA homeowner association is in agreement with straightening the line of west, the western line, the lot one twenty-five could continue to go straight through to the lot.
To be an extension of the existing lot, by straightening the line.
Extension of the existing line, yes.
Can you reference the drawing?
Yes, lot one twenty-five.
Another drawing on the map, and V S one oh one.
What is it?
V S one oh one.
One twenty-five. Metal dated June May.
Correct.
And we must be moving forward. Just give me a second, just. We'll make that subject to P R C cameras. Subject to preliminary approval conditions. Subject to any applicable color of fees that occur. Make this also subject to the Carter Public Works rules. Condition preliminary. Make that subject to resolution of final approval minutes. And this, rules are subject to the law. In the, the homeowner's association, um, to work out an agreement for access along the waterfront. They wanna do that. I should be knowing that it is accessible. That's our final sheet, I'm out here. We should say at the time, we should have that one straightened out before. So what can we set for a time to, to do that?
Have the revised plan.
Words for you guys, I mean.
I know they wanna get this filed as soon as possible, I could have a plan in two.
So you're constrained in the line out?
Correct. I can get that, I can get that tomorrow, yeah.
All right, just get that, get that, and so that's gonna be the drawing inside.
The mile area.
Okay. All right? Okay, so that would be the motion, we're not considering. Yeah, that's what you're saying. This is pretty simple, and then subject to preliminary.
Mr. DeShawn?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Jardina?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
You got it?
Oh, Mr. Arena.
All right, you got it, you're all set.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mike. Good luck with everything, you guys.
Thank you.
I know it's gonna all fall, it's gonna all fall for everyone, but it took you guys to work it out to make it happen, though.
Thank you.
It was out of our control until you guys were agreed.
Thank you.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody. Good to see you guys.
Yeah, I can talk to you. Some people can't even bother to return an email.
Are we sorry?
Yeah, thanks for that. You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Good.
I mean, you have money to sell. So, so, we got micro, like, we asked you. So, when it ends, it's great. And we got micro, like, we asked you. We made a sea wall. Right.
Very convenient. If they walk in the water, they're.
Good. Right. And actually, we're, you're, you're.
Yeah, yeah, I'm right. I don't make, did he even want?
I do, it might be, it's more for stuff, I just.
It's not safe. Although further west, going west.
West, with the water flows, it's all bad. That was not.
I don't, I don't think we should be working.
Yeah.
But I've seen.
Look at it.
They couldn't zigzag it now? I can't.
It's crazy.
I can't, I can't get down there. I don't know. The Brad, they did ask me to.
We have, we've been there for quite a while.
We'll see.
Since winter time, then, or, or not, I don't know.
And what?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, okay.
That smell about, is that?
I'm trying to get out, but it's, it's. Great. I get a little bit when I push my phone to the contact. Take back it all. When we, when we, gonna help over at Church. And we, uh, we were like, we're like, we're telling each other, it's like, man, we're just, and, uh, I know, for how long, we, and I put together a couple of this. I mean, it's terrible.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was very rushing on you, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, for any other, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, they're talking about, I mean, this is the label.
Yeah, all right, tell me right now. That's the label, right? Yeah. Right.
We've got a.
Final.
Have to go across the water and everything.
No. I'm not gonna board. There's a process. For part of the. I have a problem.
Okay, let's get started again. Am I above the hall?
For the stock.
All right. Moving on. David, you have the next question. David, there's a next question.
One thousand eight, one hundred and eighty, drive dock, one thousand eight, one hundred and fifty. This is how the question, larger point, to see review as preliminary, planning, dock, one forty. Lot is starting to look for... I made it, I'm looking for the dock, this one, I made it personal. Located at the nature, meeting party, presidential district, of Howard Towne Webster.
Sir?
Yes, me, White Howard, I'm the sole and fee of High Star Charlie Coffee LLC, which is supposed to be located thirty-three thirteen Charlie Avenue, Gosh, we are one four six. Seeking approval, which I hope is the last approval I need, from the Towne Webster. I have that...
Is that there?
No, no, the Towne Webster's been great. But DEC has got the DEC permit, I think he had it part of you, the American Board, and then he did do the ship of, maybe he just got, on the master ship, got a, of that letter. So I think the only thing I'm mad is the mercy of Webster to grant you permits like to build this dock.
Well, it looks like you have all your work done, so sure. What are you putting in, what kind of permanent?
It's a tidestide, it's a track stack, the Brandon from tidestide, the other two neighbors.
You can get floored, right?
Well, actually, it's permanent, but if you were floored, with the water.
Yeah, yeah, you've got pipes going down, but you just sort something out?
Right.
Yeah. There is, huh? Was there any issues with it? It goes out, you ride your own, you're not crossing under the adjoining property or anything? Josh, you okay with it?
Yeah, there was originally some concern, the original proposal had the dock on a slight angle. There wasn't required ten feet at the shoreline, so they revised it to comply with that.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're good with it.
Okay, does it need, do they have lights at the end, or do they have a... No, I think, yeah, they have it at the end of a hundred feet, I think. I don't know, whatever it is, the code, I think the code is a hundred foot back here, and the light at the end.
All right. Right. Over a certain...
Yeah, I think it's... But light, you can put a light out there, I've got one in my, what I've got is, I've got electric there, but always, the weather just beats that up. Just give the solar lights, turn it out there, and it's good on the... My sun is up. All right, anybody, any issues in this, or concerns? Okay, if, actually, we got to a secret on this, too.
The planning board determined that the proposed action is an unlisted action under Part Six One Seven, state environmental policy, which is secret.
Second?
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Shawnee?
All right, um... All right. Anyone want to forward on this? This, I must add, that's...
I'll make a motion to approve, one thousand eight, one hundred and eighty, uh, drive dock. To allow construction of four-four by fifty foot corner dock associated with the twenty-three five acre parcel, to approve the packet of information that we received in regards to all the drawings, our bill.
Applicants received all this...
Received, received all the permits and everything. As a final.
Second? Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Shawnee?
And as per four, this is...
You're going to do an LWRP, this is a...
We should actually, I think we have the... Yeah, I've got, I've got... Why do you file? Go ahead, do file.
I'd like to make a motion for final, one thousand eight, one hundred and eighty, drive dock. Drive. Subject to all PRC comments, subject to preliminary approval conditions. Government fees, subject for government fees. Subject to Carter Home Works approval. Perimeter construction, early in one year, and by its board, its prior on July sixth, twenty twenty-two. And that's fine?
Second? Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell? Aye.
Mr. Shawnee?
Yes, since this is in the other, local waterfront revitalization area, I make a motion that since this is LWRP, and is based on a comprehensive review, that the planning board determined that the applicant has received permits from New York State DEC, and again, a lot of this is our petition for we just use for the... See, the project doesn't have any significant impact, adverse impacts on traffic, sewer water, esthetics, what, beach waters. Project will not detrimental impact town waterlands or streams, flood zones or shorelines, public utilities, and services are adequate to meet needs of the proposal, which is basically, we wish it was more water, but it is not contiguous with any environmental area that is a problem, and this project will not affect threatened endangered species, plant life, let's see, land impacts, kind of, in the agricultural, historic, and sector, archaeological resources, and that the project is consistent with the Towne Webster's LWRP, and the project meets the Towne zoning and building codes, and will minimize erosion hazards, and you've got retaining wall, right?
It's all stoned.
Yeah, well, so you do have retaining wall, project will minimize erosion and hazards through law and structure measures incorporated. This is subject to all continuing on PRC comments, and that's motion for the all the we are paid to be set. Second?
Mr. Shawnee?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Cosell?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardena?
Aye.
Okay, this is all set?
Thank you very much.
Good luck with everything.
Westwood Estates, section two, located in the west side of South Road, north of Slaver, where the applicant might remain. He has a primary light, ran, something like, subject to Westwood Estates, as well, involving three, three single-family homes. Lot type, twenty-point-two acre area consisting, oh, sorry, located in our three single-family residential district, in the Towne Webster.
Good evening, everybody, Matt Thomas, an American engineer, got lucky to be able to conduct construction with me as well.
Wait, Matt, tip that forward a little bit. Just tip it up.
How's that?
Yeah, better, if you talk louder.
Yeah, one of the other, I can talk a little louder.
Yeah, that's good.
Great, yeah, so we're here for section two of Westwood Estates, it's a total of thirty-three lots. There have been no changes since we came before this board a couple of years ago now, for preliminary overall and final of section one. With the exception of the modification of lots two eighteen and two seventeen, to leave the old clubhouse building on that side of the road and create a lot that was in compliance for that parcel, Mike's got a buyer interested in buying that building and turning it into a residence there, so instead of demoing it, made that slight modification to the submitted materials. Section two is really in the middle of the property and extends Alyssa Lane, or Alyssa Way and Allison Lane, for the secondary access out to South Road. We did appear at the PRC meeting about a week ago with town staff, chairman was there as well, to discuss some comments there. For section two specifically, there were a couple of comments that we agreed to make modification on and work with town staff, one of which was slight modification to the, a couple of manholes, to allow for future connection, potentially across South Road in the future. Developers agreed to do that, and there was also some discussion about removing a couple of drainage easements that made very, excuse me, maybe superfluous at the rear of the lots that the highway superintendent wants to change. So when we bring in the final miler for signature, we'll have an opportunity to have that discussion with him, and tailor those easements to exactly how he would like them for town easement. There was also a lot of discussion about section one, some of the open space, our intention, and I think there was some research that Josh was going to do, potentially relative to that preliminary overall, is again, just to leave it exactly the way we had it approved, we got secret done as part of the preliminary overall. I'm sure this board remembers, we had quite a bit of discussion with neighbors, very interested in the project, I think that folks are satisfied with how that turned out, and we're looking forward to moving forward with section two here in the near future, so Mike can get the infrastructure in prior to winter conditions, and we can move forward with the home builder getting some homes sold over there. So with that, I'd like to open up to the board for any questions, and hopefully we can answer all those tonight.
So, at PRC meeting, there was discussion on some outstanding issues, how many barrels you had to move in?
Section one for the manholes, yeah, so there were two manholes that needed to be revised to five feet in diameter versus four, and Mike's agreed to do that, we're we'll have that revision on the final milers that come in to the town.
Okay, and I, Josh gave us a list, I can't find mine, I don't want to make a mistake, but what other, you guys seem happy with that? This list of comments? But what else can you call, what are the, Josh, you recall what, what else was?
Well, Matt, pardon the address, the backyard, these are the issues.
Yeah.
I believe there was one question that wanted to talk to the board about, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh was relative to potentially leaving as stone the access points, and stone water management, so... Versus...
Let me get these guys on board with that, there's something we brought up, we approved a couple of subdivisions where the road, this gravel road going into the, where the detention cars are to maintain, the strength is in base, meaning stone and so on. Well, on this one, for whatever somewhat known reason, which is a likely to the road, they asked to, well, it was actually prior, super, superintendent anyways, asked to have a blacktop. When blacktop breaks up, you don't drive on it every day, it's not a roadway, then you got grass going, then it falls apart, so that's another maintenance thing. So I said, why aren't you just leaving a gravel, like we've done with the other ones? Does that make sense to you guys? I mean, I think that's...
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
When I put blacktop that you don't drive on, maybe a couple times a year or something, then it just cobbles up, and then you're going to have somebody going in and replacing the blacktop, leave the gravel, you can go in, you can backblade it, and turn it right back to like a new driveway, you know?
Right.
All right, so I'm going to suggest that we modify that, one way or the other. Um, there were some issues, I know that, but they, they actually fall out into Ryan Holmes, I guess, you guys do the infrastructure, and as I said, in our minutes, we always put, a resolution, I should say, we always put, the infrastructure should all be in place first. Your swales, your sewers, your water, your road, everything, which was done. And inspections, I'm assuming that stuff is looked at and saying, yep, it's done, and move out of there, before you employ your equipment off the site. Now, once the house gets sold, now there's been issues with builder building houses and not grading properly, and some swales have been filled in, water directions changed, so on and so forth, which is creating a whole bunch of issues now, in that section one. This, where do we stand with that? It's got to be corrected, and I don't see where it's your responsibility, but how do we get Ryan to...
Yeah, so I know that the town engineer reached out and copied our office on an email to Ryan Holmes. Ryan Holmes has their own slip in place and their own inspection requirements, which they're required to do by DEC, and I know that she has reached out to Ryan Holmes to ask for a meeting to discuss that, to copy their documentation. So our office is planning on being a part of that meeting, because we do inspect for the overall slip on behalf of Mike. So I believe that steps are taking place right now in order to resolve that.
So that's good, they'll be corrected there.
And, and from Mike's standpoint, for the section two portion, we have offered at the PRC meeting, and will welcome a condition on there, that we walk the site upon final stabilization of the developer side before the lots are transferred, to ensure that the town is satisfied with the restoration, town engineer as the MS four. And, and I believe that's an appropriate step to take place, once that, once that infrastructure goes in as...
I agree, that should be inspected, put you clear, but not move out of it.
Yep.
I agree with that.
And that's no issue from our standpoint.
Oh, I received a phone call, actually, a gentleman who lives at South Road, he was one of what's it was called, I don't know, tag, you know, when first started the project. He said, I guess a bunch of fools are going in now, and people are just, you know, taking the waste, you know, the swell, and banking it, and doing all sorts of crazy things, and regrading yards and what have you. I don't know, I'm a person like that.
I, I mean, individual homes, it's always interesting on a multi-phase project like this, right? Because our, our developer sells to the home builders, the home builder sells to the individual owner, so ultimately, the developer can't control noodle sheds, that kind of thing, once the lot's sold. We're more than happy to address anything that is affected by section two, or in the future, section three, of course. Most of the time, that's handled, requiring some kind of a plot plan as part of a permit package, that's what we typically see in different towns, or when we're hired to to do individual lots, so I'm not sure with the towns. So that could be, but...
This doesn't fall in your, again, I'm barking up the wrong tree with you, actually, I know that, I'm aware of that. I'm just, it's frustrating to see this stuff happening, Josh is dealing with it every day, you know? And that, it really isn't, not necessary to have to be doing this, and this should be stuff that the developer, the builder, I should say, should be looking after. Josh, I don't know what the possibility is, or Roger, something like that. Should Ryan be notified that, okay, when he's completed their stuff there, they get, you know, building permits until the stuff is corrected? Because it's just creating problems, you know, drainage, and all of the town, and so on. What do you do?
Don't think that we, as a board, can make approval of contingent sections upon compliance, the fire checks, because that's in a force position. However, we don't have to approve the application for section two.
No, I don't want to do that at all, I mean, that's...
That's your call, but I don't, you can't mix the act of...
See, we approve, we approve section two, that's what they're here for, it's right. But there's issues with section one. So what I'm saying is, Ryan, before they get permits for any building in section two, need to correct their problems in section one. Can you get that cleared?
Oh, you're actually clear.
I just, I think we have a board to do that.
No?
Not yet.
I don't think that the planning board is in the purview, but building permits, which would follow a couple of months after Mike's done with his work in turning the lots over, I think there's four or five months between now and when section two lots are going to be sold to Ryan Holmes, so I think there's opportunity out there, and again, I think the first step, being the town engineer with the slip and the MS four authorization, is, is taking that step, but I don't know that, to your point, that a condition on section two approval necessary, necessarily is within the purview of the planning board for, for an enforcement issue.
So maybe then what there needs to be is inspection down there, where the drainage issues are, and people have called, apparently, right, Josh? You've got calls, and you have somebody go out, take a look at it, and say, okay, these are the issues, fix them up before we go in for a review?
And I, again, I think the town engineer is taking those steps currently.
Okay, but, see, I don't know, that's good, okay. All right, well, that's, that's it, other than that, I don't have any issues, you guys are clearing things up in section one, there's nothing really big outstanding. Illuminating the ash fault in there. Anything else, Josh, that needs to be?
The only other thing I can think of is, I guess, part of the open space area has some existing paths from, from the golf course.
The only other thing I can think of is, I guess, pardon, the open space area has some existing paths from, from the golf course, and there was some discussion at P R C about whether or not the town wants those to continue to be there or not. I don't think we came to a definitive conclusion on that, but, um, it's just something to think about, since it's a maintenance thing for the town in the future.
And the town taking dedication to it, maybe, or...
Correct, the, the, the open space portion of this section has some existing asphalt walking paths from the old golf...
Oh, that's, yeah, yeah, right, that's where the bridges were, that, that...
Right, so there was some talk about potentially having that removed, so that it's not a future maintenance obligation for the town.
Would they, okay, would they be walking, those areas, would they be walking paths when the project is complete or what, I don't know how that would come down?
The, the open space, I, I believe is just defined as passive open space that's mowed, uh, Mike's mowing it currently. Uh, I know there was a discussion about taking those bridges down, that can become a safety issue in the future, uh, some of the bridges, um, that are all retreat where the paths used to cross them. In my opinion, and I think Mike's preference would be to leave them, and if they break down over time and turn it into gravel to walk on, so be it versus ripping them out and playing some grass, um, I guess it... The section two open space is connected to section three, so that decision could be deferred to the future, meaning we're not going to have the town take dedication to that until section three goes in, because it's all connected to each other. Section one, which is up in this area, backing the bush with circle and follow, leave terrace, that piece is isolated and was all comprised by section one, so we're gonna be working, helping Mike's attorney work with the town attorney to turn that piece of it over in very near future. The section two open space, sure, it will be dedicated in the town until section three goes through, um, so we'll get back in before this period if there's a, a strong feeling one way or the other.
So, what should we do with that, and should we wait until section three comes in, or do you...
I don't, I don't want that at all, I think that's just pure setup for failure, because what's gonna happen when section three comes in? Either you're gonna take it down or you're gonna leave it, and if you're gonna leave it and the repairs need to be made, who's gonna be making those repairs? The town, I already, you wouldn't do a part of that, would you?
No, I, the town would have to take acceptance of the open space in there that satisfies whatever was written into the overall preliminary...
Now, now, we start thinking, why do we need that? Why do we need those bridges, why?
Oh, no, the bridges, I, are, have been agreed to that they're being taken down. There's no asphalt around the bridges, there's actually only about a thirty-foot piece right now that has any asphalt that we're talking about. The old cart paths are used by people from the neighborhood walking through, or the old buyers, that kind of thing. They're walking on grass, you know, there is one part where the original box called...
Mike, why don't you go to the light, there's just one...
Uh, Mike, give me a couple of combat construction, there's only one small area right now that, where the existing box called there was, that, uh, we go over the asphalt, like, that, there was a little area where they had maybe about thirty feet of asphalt there. Right, then you just, uh, this one, or this one? It's near the, near the old ponds for the golf course. And it'd be very easy to take it out, it would take us maybe ten minutes to peel off that asphalt, and just put grass in there, it was a topstone, so that's not... Most of the other pads were broken up with gravel, and that section, yeah, there is one piece in the third section now, small piece, but that's maybe forty feet long. So maybe a point, I, there was just some discussion, as mentioned, at the...
So, no, nothing, then what does this do then, Mike, well, so, would you play, what would you, look at, your plan being that, do with that property? Is that turned over to the town, or is that, I know that came up with the...
Open space is turned over to the town, that's, that's what was, uh, part of the overall preliminary approval for the cluster subdivision that was included, yes?
Second?
The town has to make a decision whether to continue to call it the way I am, and it still looks like a golf course, or whether they're gonna let it, I guess, overgrown.
How many acres of it is actually remaining in the grass area?
I mean, a lot of things, so, most of fifty acres right now of grass.
Other than the portions that are the ponds and wetland from the, you know, that, ponds and the golf course and this one.
So, grass area is how many?
Most of fifty acres, for three of them together, yeah.
All right.
And it is, it is spread throughout the subdivision, as I mentioned, there's a piece on the north side, and then, uh, three different chunks through sections two and three. About fifty acres would be totaling the whole subdivisions to the house areas, so the whole parcel's eighty acres, probably use thirty of it in, in the first section, and then maybe fifty, sixty acres in the second section, and, uh, in the third section, probably maybe twenty acres or thirty acres of open space. That, normally on a two, seven, eighty, we would just leave that open space, but this is actually an off course, so it's very nicely taken care of by that, and so I continue to do that, uh, I, I'm sure the residents and everyone would love to have the town continue to do that, not only the residents from this subdivision, but all of them that residents around, and are all using it and going to the existing pond, and fishing, and doing all the active things.
Walking their dogs and...
Yeah, and some of them mow the path through there, if we, if it gets overgrown from house, we need to, to fasten up, they will, they'll go a little path in there themselves, and that's what they walk on.
Okay. How come this issue wasn't resolved with P R C, or was that all?
Uh, it was a question raised by us, us staff member that I don't think really got a lot of traction in the discussion, so... Again, either what, if, if there's a desire to have those strips of asphalt taken out, we can do it, or if the bridges were pretty straightforward, uh, yeah, okay, we'll take them out, type thing, so, it, we really defer to the town, if it's... Uh, correct, yeah.
Um, I guess, that's it, so what, we eliminated the asphalt driveway?
To the storm guard management, so...
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
The bridges, he'll, you can take them out, wherever, they're, they're not safety, yes, or no?
They're small structures, wood, that were for the golf carts to go across back and forth, yeah, we can take those out.
All right, so, okay, so, bridges are coming up, and we're moving the asphalt, okay, so they go up, about two or three minutes, so, fire. I mean, fire, yeah, fire the subdivision. Do you wanna make a motion to it, or do you just make one? All right, I'll make a motion for final approval for, uh, the section, section two of Westwood subdivision. We'll make that subject to any P R, all the P R C comments, um, it's gonna be subject to parts and correct fees, is whatever they are determined by the town board in the individual homes, I think that's subject to the, uh, original preliminary proof conditions, it's subject to all applicable governmental fees, it's subject to apartment or public works approvals, uh, significant construction, uh, occurs within one year, which is July sixth, twenty twenty two. Uh, condition of preliminary final approval are depicted on the cover of the page of the final design plans. And, let's see, the engineer for proposed projects provide a letter of certification that all the proposed work was completed as per, for planning board resolution, final approval, before C of O told the issue, and a letter of credit to the town for the projects, including fee with the engineers by certification, inspection of the site, and, which is anyway, so, stored water facilities are being constructed first. Do they connect downspouts there, or...
Uh, some portions, front yards, the area yards are...
All right, downspouts can connect with the storage system, and subject to the resolution that final approved minutes, and this is subject to the drawing number, who's the drawing number of the asset? Got it, I think we're here.
C O one?
C O one? C O one? Oh, and, uh, yeah, wait, the, uh, asphalt topping for the drive, exit, entrance to the detention facility to be removed and just allowed to just be stone.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that's it. Second?
Mr. Pishani?
Aye.
Mr. Cardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixel?
Aye.
Mr. Oso?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Hey, that's my son. Okay, that's it, right? All right, we finished first evening, so, if others, thanks for coming in. Yeah, yes, it's time to be, uh...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for table six, two thousand twenty one.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for section one, point one, if you do the first.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, if you do fifteen, two thousand twenty one.
Second? Last second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. The board, that's it, is it?
That's it.
All right, we're good, next, you have to...